For invocation. Why don't we just have a moment of silence that our opening day goes with no problems? On September 8th. Thank you. Can we roll call, please?
Mrs. Costa?
Here.
Mrs. Hall? Mr. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mr. Salazar?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston?
Here.
Chairman Crizell?
Here. All right. Number four, superintendent's report, EPS school update. Mr. Dreszak, and we will all mute while you're...
Wait for you to mute. Not you, Jacqueline. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the last time we met, I presented a recommendation that the board ultimately adopted to reopen schools on a hybrid plan for specifically for K-12. And I stated that evening that I wasn't prepared to make a recommendation for our pre-K program at Stowe because there were a lot of barriers that we had to overcome in order to come up with an actual plan. Um, what I can say now that I didn't want to say at the last time we met was to be completely transparent, at that time, it didn't look like it was going to be possible to open up our Stowe Early Learning Center because of all the barriers. I also knew that if I gave Ms. Valley, um, a couple of uninterrupted days to actually figure it out and left her alone, that she actually would. Um, so that's why I mentioned that I was hoping to have something by the end of last week, but um, I didn't want to put too much pressure on Jacqueline because she was our last line of defense to actually make this work. Um, so I asked, and so we don't have a board guest this evening, I actually have a guest of my own, where I asked our uh, director of early childhood initiatives to join us this evening um, to present a plan um, for how we're going to open up the Stowe Early Learning Center this year. I want to preface this for the public and those who are watching. This was the most difficult reopening plan that we had to try to come up with, and I give all the credit to Jacqueline and her team, as well as our, our, our folks in special ed and Julie Carroll, and also our partners with ECDC to try to come up with a plan that will work. Um, and as Jacqueline, and I asked Jacqueline to present this evening because A, she can articulate this much better than I can. Um, and more importantly, she probably will answer a lot of questions you have and what she's going to share. Um, and she's actually the, the, the best subject matter expert to even have this conversation. So in a moment, I'm going to ask Jacqueline to... Um, I'm stalling because guy's on the phone and he's going to be running the PowerPoint, so I'm, I'm waiting for him to be okay before I turn it over to Jacqueline. But I do want to mention this to those who are watching at home. There, no plan is perfect. I think we've established that this summer, that every plan has its pros and cons. Uh, and I'm sure there are components of this plan that some aren't going to like, and there might be components of this plan that some people will like. Um, the reality is that if it came down between what we're about to present this evening or what the alternative is, I like this plan better because the alternative is, we're probably not open. So I want to make sure that we set expectations for everyone at home that's watching. Um, and I want to make sure that any challenges we have with the plan, direct goes towards me, Jacqueline did in seventy-two hours created something that I didn't think a week ago was possible, so I wanted to thank her for that. Um, and before I turn it over to Jacqueline again, I want to remind everyone with all of our plans um, that the, you know, nothing is ideal, nothing is perfect, and there's nothing ideal about anything that we're dealing with. And I'm going to leave you with a quote from a great American poet and songwriter, um, Jon Bon Jovi. "Stacy, I see your face," and I'll argue that point with you offline anytime. Um, but there's a, there's a new song out that I heard recently that says, "If you can't do what you do, you do what you can." And that pretty much sums up what we're dealing with. We can't do what we normally do. We can't open school the way we're used to it, the way you're used to it, the way our kids are used to it. We're not allowed to do that right now because of the world we live in. But we're going to do what we can. And by that, we're going to do what we can to make this experience as best as possible for our kids, and then return as best as possible for our, our, our staff and, and, and our families as well. We're going to create the best opportunities we can, and we're going to do it as safely as humanly possible. So that said, guys still in the hallway, I don't, can't stall much longer. But I'm going to turn it over to our resident uh, ray of sunshine, Ms. Valley, um, who also, if I stole your Jon Bon Jovi quote, I apologize, but I couldn't...
Yeah, well. You got it. So I couldn't be more pleased to be here tonight to talk about pre-K because as you know, it's my favorite place in the whole world. Um, and yes, the fact is that it's not a perfect plan as no plan is at the moment, and I want to acknowledge, as Chris already said, you did steal some of what I was going to say. That some components of the plan I'm going to share with you may not be popular with everyone, it may not be how you envisioned it yourself, but it is the one that makes it possible to get our kids back into the hallways at Stowe, into their classrooms within the many constraints that we're facing with the different funding sources and accreditations that we fall under. So I am challenging you to look at this presentation through a lens of possibility and dedication to the safety of our kids' families and, um, one another. So as you know, Stowe houses four unique pre-K programs under one roof, as well as the FRC and Kite, making space sort of limited. This plan will discuss how the three Board of Ed pre-K programs being Head Start, the Integrated Pre-K, and the PK Steam Academy will open. So as you can see here, this is the structure for how the Integrated Pre-K works in a hybrid model. They will begin on September 8th. And since it's formerly, um, pre-COVID, a part-day classroom with AM and PM sessions, it will remain that way. There are four classrooms. Um, and instead of going on a Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, they will go four days a week. Um, Group A being in the AM and Group B being in the PM. We have increased their regular school hour from two and a half to three hours per session, which allows them to maximize their in-person learning for our kids with the highest needs. Um, and this also includes Remote Wednesdays. Remote Wednesdays will allow teachers to meet with small groups or provide individual services to students. Um, I have the utmost faith in the integrated staff that they will come up with creative ways to make sure that their kids can be engaged while supporting families at home. Um, and on Remote Wednesdays, they will also have access to their team's channel for their classroom, which the parents will have had time to have training on with the teachers throughout this process. Um, and that's how that plan looks in the middle of their day between AM and PM sessions to ensure that Group A and Group B remain co-horted because um, our building falls under the Office of Early Childhood Guidance, which strongly, strongly, strongly recommends cohorting as the best means of mitigating the virus. So, um, in between Group A and Group B, there will be an hour and thirty-five minutes allowing staff to clean the classroom appropriately, high-touch surfaces, et cetera. Um, the teachers are pretty amazing and they've come up with really unique ways to, um, I'm going to use both bin items, so they're going to go through their classrooms, determine what items can be easily sanitized. They'll have an AM bin and all of the materials that happen to be shared will go into that bin for sanitizing, the lid will go on it, and round two PM class materials will come out, making sure that there's no cross-contamination. So that's the first one. Head Start and Steam, um, will follow a similar structure. Um, I propose that we start on September fourteenth, and I will explain that in a few minutes. They will also follow the hybrid model just like K-12 um, with the, by last name on Monday and Tuesday and Thursday and Friday. On Wednesdays, they will have live instruction with their teacher, small groups, opportunities to come together as a large group so that in the event they are allowed to go back in person, or we can make that work as a whole class, they'll be familiar with one another. Uh, family communication, which is a huge component of what we do. They can spend time recording for teams, um, planning, attending PPPs, documenting, and thinking about how they're going to refresh their materials because preschool has a different set of guidelines for materials, which I will talk about in a little bit. So I want to talk about Friday, September, I mean, first day being September fourteenth. For many children, preschool is the first step in their educational career. An orientation to the program lays the foundation for the relationships between school and home to be established. We all know that it's best practice. Head Start and Steam follow different standards than Integrated. So Integrated can, during, um, next week's five days of PD, they will have some time to schedule short blocks of time for families to come in, see the classroom, work with the teacher for a little bit, and then they'll be able to sanitize and have the next family in. Um, the other two programs are required to administer screenings. Um, still on that flag, guy, sorry. Um, they, uh, have to administer screenings, and so they need a little bit more time with the student one-on-one and the family because we have home visits that we have to hold, and we're going to hold, we'd like to hold them here on site where families work with educators and family advocates to develop, um, partnership agreements where they talk about goals for the year, they set goals for education, they talk about the family goal. Um, and we also have to have a specific orientation that covers the different components of the pre-K day, including the family component, the education component, and the health component. So, um, during those, those five days, um, I would like to propose that teachers can have that time so that they can run those groups. And then they'll have time to clean in between, making sure that nobody's cross-contaminating families will enter through the back door. Um, and our nurse is going to be very busy this year um, with all the paperwork because it's different than it was in years past, and so she's trying to print out all the paperwork and make sure that everybody has the proper documentation, which is a huge part of what we do when we normally invite families in. Our nurse always has a very long line out the door, so this would give families the opportunity to meet with her as well. Um, okay, next slide. Protocols related to school procedures and how it works in a shared building with ECDC. So Karen and I, um, have worked very closely to figure out scheduling, et cetera. So for arrival and dismissal, um, it is recommended by the Office of Early Childhood to enhance social distancing, but also allow that um, interaction, FaceTime between the teacher and the child and the parent at drop-off because a lot of times that can be a tough transition for kids. So we have, um, made a staggered drop-off that allows families to drop off at the back doors of the classroom so they can have a visual of the teacher with the child at the same time, so the child can feel comfortable leaving whomever's dropping them off. We had lines painted outside to keep them distant, and we are finalizing the parking map, which can be complicated if you've ever been to Stowe, um, that will allow families to see the direct route for which they should enter, and then where they should park, and then how they can walk to their exterior classroom door. Um, we are also working on developing a memo to be posted in the window. One of the concerns out of the Office of Early Childhood was losing that personal connection for families when they drop off at preschool. So our memo is going to be posted in the window and it'll just give a general overview of some exciting materials that kids will be exploring during the day, a possible center time, the story that they're focusing on, if they're doing an experiment, their question of the day, and other things that the family could touch base with their child about when they get home. That will also be on Teams, but while they're waiting outside, it would be nice for them to see something since they can't come in and browse materials. Um, we've also created a shared bathroom schedule, allowing all classrooms at Stowe to have their own scheduled times multiple times throughout the day. Um, and we will reserve on-demand stalls because, um, three and four-year-olds need to go when they need to go. So it doesn't matter how many times I schedule a break, they're going to need to go. Um, and then we have many kids who are toilet trained, so we will assign various locations for that to happen, um, for changing purposes, et cetera. Um, and our nurse is amazing. If you haven't met her, so she is working on identifying those areas for us. Um, in terms of, um, phase, um, every inch of Stowe, when I tell you every single solitary inch is being utilized to ensure appropriate social distancing and integrity to providing, um, safe, high-quality learning environments for our younger learners. The physical classroom spaces fall under the guidance of the Office of Early Childhood, as I mentioned, so the restrictions are less. So you will still see materials that are on shelves, you will still see shelves, it will still have, um, an intentional feeling that looks inviting to a child. Kids, um, should be allowed to have contact, but distance when appropriate. Um, teachers will work to minimize the number of children in an area, bins will be created so that everybody has individual things that they only use, such as crayons, markers, glue, and then certain um, sensory materials because those have to be eliminated from the classroom. Um, and hand washing will be increased before and after the use of materials, and then if a small group is using a material that will then be put in that sanitizing bucket that I was referring to. It sounds like there's a lot of buckets, but these guys are really good at this. And family engagement, we talked about the door, and then, um, the retention of curriculum initiatives is hugely important here. So, um, we have ten, the ten teachers that are certified PLTW project lead which is very exciting. Um, we will be implementing the four modules, um, in Head Start and Steam classrooms. Um, all classrooms, including Integrated, will be using our second-step social-emotional curriculum, and our executive function strategies will continue to be implemented in whatever model that we fall in. Um, we've had teachers working with East Con and Killingley Schools to modify those activities to be remote in the event that they had to be, or um, if people chose to be remote and we were in person. Um, and then to further, this is, um, my favorite part of this plan, to further enhance our partnership between the town and the board um, via the, um, and Built Out of Them Development Center in Stowe. Um, the board pre-K programs on Remote Wednesdays will share support staff to help facilitate our K-5 students' learning onsite at Stowe. So we can use them in multiple ways. They will have iPads so they can join their classrooms, but they will also be available for our K-5 students, which is a huge support to the students, the families, and Karen. Next one. Um, this is going to be a tough one. Um, one of our shining moments last year was the opportunity to bus one hundred percent of our PK students to Stowe, but in order to do so, we exhausted all of our staff to service bus monitors. Given the new safety protocols that must take place in the classroom, we simply cannot dedicate staff to the role of bus monitor. So when you talk about kids coming to the back door, even on a reduced number, these kids need an adult guiding them to wash their hands to ensure that they're washing their hands for the recommended amount of time, that they're putting their things in a distanced way, et cetera, and then making it to the bathroom on their scheduled time. Um, if we had buses, the monitors would not be back in time. Um, additionally, we cannot meet the Office of Head Starts Transportation Information Memorandum protocols, which require all adults and children to be temp checked before um, getting on the bus, as well as screened with a variety of questions to make sure they're not exhibiting any symptoms. So that piece alone would not allow us to get to school on time, really. We'd have to start very early in the morning. Um, they require that you position children as far apart as possible and six feet from the driver with one to a bench. We put our kids on vans that would not allow for many children to be on the bus at all, and I'm not even sure that we would have the capacity to find the van at this point. Um, staggering bus times, which impacts the K-12 situation, and keeping group sizes small. This one's a recommendation, and if possible, keeping class groups together on the bus, which is nearly impossible to do, but that is to uphold that cohorting. So by eliminating busing during Phase One and providing transportation for one of our programs based on requirements and state guidance, um, we'll reduce our bus runs from forty-six to six, making it very possible to get through that, um, and allowing staff to implement the additional safety and cleaning protocols with fidelity. Um, I do want to highlight again that Head Start students, Integrated Pre-K peer partners, and PK Steam Academy students will be transported to and from school by their caregiver, but a positive in all of this is that we, um, at Stowe have made personal contact with the majority of our pre-K families to get a sense of their need for transportation and/or their intent to access it if it were still available this year, and a very small percentage reported that they would prefer busing due to convenience, but no families contacted indicated that a lack of busing would prevent their attendance. So I see that as a positive. I see it as the community working together to overcome a challenge, but we can still get to school, so that's great. Um, and I just want to thank our Stowe families. They deserve so much more than a thank you for their patience and flexibility where this plan is concerned. I recognize how hard it is to plan for your child and your family when you're waiting for answers. Um, and so anybody who's listening, I encourage you to reach out to me with any questions you have because I'm happy to answer them. Thanks, Guy.
Thank you, Jackie. Excellent presentation, as always. Um, so do we want to throw it out for questions now, Mr. Dreszak, or we want to wait under board member comments?
Um, if you want to wait under, if there's specific comments for, um, for Jacqueline, so that way she doesn't have to stay on the whole day. Um, I would go open that up, but I, I've got another laundry list of things to share with you.
All right, so let's do, let's do specific questions for Stowe, and we'll start with Mr. Ryder. Any questions?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Valley for explaining all this and how each individual participant program within Stowe will be working, and I know that this was difficult for you as well as the superintendent. And I just want to thank you for explaining everything and for being available for questions afterwards, and I don't have a specific question, I just wanted to say thank you for, for being here.
Thank you.
Ms. Thurston, any questions? No questions, Ms. Thurston? I'm sorry. Okay, I have to flip screens to see you, so sorry. Um, Mr., but I see Ms. Hall is still not on. So we'll go with Ms. Ms. LeBlanc, any questions?
Hi, Ms. Valley. Um, I just wanted to take a minute and say thank you, um, for your presentation. Um, I understand that, you know, from what Superintendent Dreszak said, that this was a, a very challenging plan. I think when we're dealing with the little ones, you would know best. They thrive on human interaction and um, human touch, especially from their teachers and their classmates. Um, so I'm imagining this is going to be challenging for everyone, um, especially when you work with young children, you also enjoy it. Um, I like that there's still going to be family engagement. I know, um, when you drop your kids off at preschool, you almost need the interaction with the teacher as much as they do. So, um, I appreciate, um, this thought-out plan. Um, I'm happy that you were able to reach the families and, and try to get an idea on how, um, not being able to provide transportation um, would impact them, but again, thank you, and, um, I hope everything goes well, and I appreciate your comprehensive, um, presentation, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Uh, Ms. Costa, any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you very much for all the information.
Mr. Salazar, no questions? Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Valley.
I made it. I can now hear.
Hi, Joyce.
Hi, Joyce.
I made it finally.
All right, so we'll continue with Mr. LeBlanc, and then we'll go back to Ms. Hall.
Uh, Ms. Valley, um, thank you, uh, given the challenges that this is all presented as our superintendent, uh, stated earlier in the meeting. Um, this was probably the hardest out of all of them to come up with a game plan with, especially, um, as Tina said, with little ones. I mean, there's so much to try to keep things as normal as possible for them, and, um, given the severity of those challenges, I think, uh, the solution that you and, uh, the superintendent have come up with, um, is the best way to go, um, as we look forward, um, and try to navigate through this. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just to be fair, Ms. Hall, we had a presentation by Ms.
I know, I was looking forward to seeing it.
Okay, so I don't know if you had any question, any questions for her?
I'd ask her to hold, do the whole thing over again if I did.
Happy to do so, Joyce.
Uh, I'll have to watch you on YouTube or something.
I'll send you the link.
So I will say that Joyce is well-versed in Head Start as she serves on our policy committee, and Joyce, we, um, this plan upholds all of those Head Start standards that we are accountable to due to
Of course, we do.
funding, yes. And, um, Joyce is part of a lot of conversations about the nature of how pre-K students learn. Um, and these plans and the curriculum plans developed uphold, um, are, are developed in the spirit of consistency and predictability for kids and families. So as families are home on certain days, the teachers will make their lives as predictable as possible, and for every
So you're running a hybrid as well?
For two of the programs.
How many students will you be having on a given day, then?
Um, right now, we currently have ninety-one of our one hundred and two seats filled in Head Start, but, um, twenty-eight have already requested remote, no matter what the plan was. So it changes our numbers a little bit. Um, but right now, there's no more than, um, eight in the session.
Okay.
So that allows us to do the distancing and the handwashing. Um, the playgrounds are another issue. You can only have one group on a playground. We have four play spaces. So to divide outside time for these kids was a little challenging, but we figured it out with the help of some amazing staff that work here, and we have those schedules, so um, that's great.
Thank you, Jackie.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that, and I'll see you soon with crayons.
With crayons. Thanks, Joyce.
All right, Ms. Ms. Valley, uh, Jonathan, uh, Mr. LeBlanc, so there's one more question.
Yeah.
Uh, it just came to mind, uh, I guess, um, just reading my notes here, in regards to the busing, um, the only way that, that works, um, out in full capacity again is if, you know, things go back to normal, I guess you could say, is that, that's the, I guess, plan on busing, looking into the future.
Yeah, so for us, um, if we have these safety protocols in place, it's the supervision issue because of the age of the students, so until those are lessened or they become a little more manageable, um, it would be really hard for us to have forty-six bus runs using our staff on site to go and do that, and then if Head Start didn't lift those requirements that I was mentioning about temp checks and screenings, the kids would never get to school, right? So that would impact their instructional day, which would be upsetting.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you again, Ms. Valley. Excellent job, as always. Uh, my daughter was actually watching tonight, too, so I already got a text from her that she's thumbs up, so. And she says hi, so.
Hi, Grace.
We'll go from there.
Okay.
And if you want to, uh, leave us, you may, or if you want to stay and listen to Mr. Dreszak for the next two and a half hours, that's fine.
I will while she's here, um, just want to, again, publicly, uh, I think we all got to see how lucky we are to have somebody like Jacqueline working for us. There, there isn't a stronger advocate for tiny humans. Um, and I know a few of you mentioned comments about, you know, superintendent told us about part of the plan, or as he presented, no, no. And the, and the assistant had, didn't, didn't put this plan together. This was all Jacqueline and, and her staff and presenting to us about, you know, uh, the challenge we gave her was, can you figure out a way to get kids in? Um, and, and she did, and then that's a testament to her and everyone who works over there, including our, our partners over at ECDC, so. Um, you know, it's not ideal. I think for, for, you know, a perfect world, everything would be ideal, as we would, we wouldn't be having these conversations, but considering that the, the circumstances we're under, it, it's remarkable that she was able to, to come up with a plan that still meets the needs for, for our kids and keeping everybody as safe as we can. Uh, with the hope, as Mr. LeBlanc mentioned, uh, the, the, the word that's afforded a word now is normal. Um, I think everyone's intention is, is that, you know, we're going to go through this phase and hope that we're going to start looking for better days, and we're going to get better news, and we can get back to normal soon, and let's hope that day is October nineteenth. But that's what we're, that's what we're striving for. So thank you again, Jacqueline. She is our resident ray of sunshine, and now you got, I'll get this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for everything.
You can hang up if you want. We won't force you to listen to me.
I need to listen.
Thank, thank you again. Mr. Dreszak, please continue.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm going to start with, um, because I, 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 tonight's going to, we're turning a page. We're going to start talking about good things. Uh, it seems like the last couple of months, um, it's always been challenges and hurdles and frustration and all that stuff that we've dealt with, but it's, it's time to, you know, our kids are going to show up in almost in less than two weeks. We, we need to start talking, changing the tone around here a little bit, and then I'm going to start tonight. So the first thing I'm going to say isn't necessarily the good news, um, but I still, I know that I'm getting a lot of questions from parents and from staff members about, you know, the metrics for closing that we've talked so frequently about over the last several months. Um, I still don't have them. I know it was reported in, in some media outlets that DPH was going to be sending those out today. Uh, as of when we went live, I had, still hadn't received them. Um, there are still a lot of questions about what do we do in the event there's a confirmed case in a school building, in a, in a particular class or cohort, what gets shut down. And no parents are, are anxious to find out the answers to that, um, as am I and everyone else that works here. Um, unfortunately, I don't have a definitive answer at this point as to what the requirements for closure are going to be. Um, but at some point, you know, we're going to start, and September eighth is going to come, and if we don't have an answer, then someone's going to need to make a decision, and that someone is going to need to be me. And I, I've come to terms with that, so just so the public knows, if there's not clear guidance on what we need to do to close, um, I'm going to confer with our local health director, I'm going to confer with the town manager like we did back in March, and we're going to make the safest decision possible. That may mean we have to shut down, I don't know. Um, but, you know, absent of any definitive answer from the state as to what we're required to do in the event there is a confirmed case or a symptomatic case, um, you know, we're going to have to proceed with as much caution as humanly possible, and we've always done that. We, we, it would be consistent from when we did this back in March. Um, but I'm hopeful by the end of the week, we'll, we'll have something definitive from the state. Um, everything else is good news. Um, at least I look at it that way. Good news number one is our masks have arrived. So I'm going to model these virtually for everybody, and I take my glasses off because I'll break them. Um, but these are the masks, and I'll try to get as close as I can to the camera so that everyone can see
Whoa.
our district logo that's on them. So they're green, they're our district logo that's on them. So they're green, they're comfortable. And in six months of wearing a mask, it's the only one that actually fits me. So, uh, I gotta thank Corey O'Connor, O'Connell, our athletic director for getting on top of that earlier and getting them in on time. Uh, we're going to start distributing those out to schools so we can get them out to kids prior to coming to school, but they are in. Uh, as well as our PPE that we ordered, um, it has, has arrived. So our face shields for our teaching staff and particularly for our, our staff who works in some of our, uh, high area needs programs that work directly with kids that may be in four days a week or, or, we're bringing in additional PPE for them. That has arrived. Um, I know I spent last week showing you a visual of our iPads and our cases. And I indicated that the cases weren't yet in. What I'm comfortable sharing tonight was that the gentleman sitting in my office hasn't slept in about two months because the notification on the cases were that it was possible they wouldn't ship until the end of September. Um, I'm pleased to announce that Saturday morning, they informed Guy that they have indeed shipped and we anticipate receiving them this week. Um, so I called him on late Sunday to make sure that he actually slept and he did. Um, so give Guy a break as he was nervous that we weren't going to get these things in time and be able to get them out. But the cases will be coming in this week. Um, just in time for us to assemble them, the cases and the iPads so that our staff, so talking to our teachers who may be watching, your iPads are here. And we're hopeful that we're going to be distributing them out to your buildings by Friday so that when you get here on Monday, your iPads will be there for you. And then we will be racing against the clock to get them assembled and put together to get them out to kids as quickly as we can before they get to school. That's actually good news. Um, we do have, and we're going to post them on the district website tonight and we want to take an opportunity to thank all of our friends over at Smith Bus. Um, Bob Smith is always, and it's just like his brother Dick has been a great partner with us throughout my tenure here. Um, and, and, and John as well has been outstanding to work with. But I also have to do a, this is an annual thing where I have to specially thank Jesse McCruel over at Smith Bus. Every time we come up with some kind of crazy idea, whether it's consolidating a school or going to a hybrid plan, um, the actual day-to-day operations of figuring out that chaos usually lands on one person's desk and that's Jesse. Um, but Jesse's been working with us, you know, uh, daily and, and working with Kathy daily through the summer to not just do regular transportation issues, but also come up with uh, bus protocols for kids to get on safely that meets with the guidelines. So those we're going to post on our website today so that parents will know. And it'll look a little different. Kids are going to enter buses differently than they normally would. Um, and just going back, I know Jacqueline's turned her camera off. I should have mentioned to the public, um, the presentation tonight wasn't for the board to take a vote in case that comes up later. Um, technically, I know you guys took a vote on the hybrid plan last week. If you can recall, that wasn't a requirement. That was something I felt compelled to do. In this particular case, there's no need to make a vote. I have the ability to say we're going to go ahead and do it, but we wanted to tell the board before I said, we're going to go ahead and do it. So in case that comes up later, okay, you could turn off now again, Jack. Um, but I just want to thank again Jesse, a lot has been put on our plate with, with regards to putting the bus protocols together. Um, they've done a fantastic job to make sure that all our kids are getting on, they're getting on safely. We're doing everything we can to adhere to the guidelines of keeping kids separated as well as disinfecting the buses appropriately. And they've done a remarkable job to put that. So we have that out there so parents can see. Our, I also have to thank Trish Vada, um, our longtime nursing supervisor who retired probably five years ago and never left us. Um, she has been a rock for me, especially when it comes to health and safety issues that I may not necessarily be well versed on. Um, as an example, we're going to be sending out more information today that Trish put together that it's, it, it, we've become spoiled with people like Jacqueline and Trish working in the district where Jack, Trish will say, we need to tell parents about X, Y, and Z, about getting medications, where our nurses have gone above and beyond, um, to start getting notification out to families that have medications and how to do that appropriately. All that's going out and that's all been at the direction of Trish, who is our retired nursing supervisor who came back into duty to help us out on, on one occasion. Uh, and I just want to take, before I get into the last bit of big news, um, is our administrators and our teachers and all of our staff members, but particularly over this past summer, our administrative team. Um, we have dumped a lot on our administrators, particularly our principals. Um, and one of the things that has concerned me throughout this whole process is it gets overwhelming at times because you know, you have a hundred and seventy pages of guidelines that we have to adhere to. And your, your mind is always racing and, and a lot of us during this quarantine period um, have, have become a little, at least I have, and I try not to, I, I, I don't mind delegating things because I have an enormous trust in our staff here. Um, and Andy and I have had this conversation over, over the past couple of months is, you know, as much as we trust our, everybody to, to take the ball and run with it, it's a lot more difficult in this environment. So when this started in March and we saw the writing on the wall, it was, I hate to say it was a lot easier because we were able to call everyone to this building. Everyone sit in a room, very close together without wearing a mask. All that was foreign to us at the time. Um, and develop a plan. And in seventy-two hours, we only had a distance learning plan. We had them copied. We had them distributed. Everything went off without a hitch. Trying to do all that remotely, um, i- is very challenging. And we've dumped a lot on our, on our staff to say, you know, there's certain things at the district level that we have to handle. And I've mentioned this earlier, that it's important for families and staff members to hear directly from their principals or from their department leaders. Um, and I, you know, with the cloud that we live in over the last couple of weeks, we really didn't get an opportunity to take a step back and, and really appreciate all the work that everyone has done. Um, and just as an example, today I spent watching the safety videos that are going to be going out to staff members on Monday and shortly after. Um, that will be going out to the public so parents and staff members and students can see, which is required. And you would think that it was a Hollywood production that was done right down the hall here by John Diggs and, and narrated by John Diggs. Um, you know, during an administrative meeting this week, I, I had a crazy idea over the weekend about maybe doing something in the schools next week a little bit differently. And before I had a chance, a virtual hand went up and one of our principals who remain nameless said, Noah Chris, we're going to do an X, Y, and Z. And not being together to, to talk about these things, you our people have done a remarkable job putting this together. And it's, it's easy for me to say now because you all haven't seen it, but you're going to be seeing it all very shortly, including things like virtual open houses. Um, and just videos on how to walk through the hallway and looking at the tape on the ground and where to stand. Um, our, our people have really stepped up above and beyond and there's too many to thank individually. So I want to take this opportunity before this is the last time we're going to meet like this before kids come back, um, to tell everybody how much I appreciate the work that and the sacrifices they've made over the summer. Um, trying to put this together to make it the, the absolutely best that they can for, for everybody. Um, and most importantly for our kids. I know our, our, our teachers have millions of questions, but in, in speaking with, with our teachers union, and I want to thank, thank Emily in particular, because I think I talked to her on a daily basis. There's still, the, the, a lot of the questions that I can't answer for you guys right now. Um, they're dealing with the same things and there's a lot of frustration on their end as well, but we never stop talking. And even if there's something that we have to work out, we all have a shared commitment and a shared value that we're going to do what's right for kids. We're going to do what's right for our staff members and we're going to get through this one way or another. So I wanted to take the chance to, to thank, to thank her and thank everybody who's involved in this as well. Second to last big news, um, and this was something that kept most of us up at night, um, when we're in, in relations to talking about our staff. Um, for the parents out there who watched the last meeting and realized that there was going to be a challenge for them under a hybrid plan because the reality is your son or daughter was only going to be in school two days a week. What were you going to do for daycare or, or childcare or having somebody watch your kids while you're in school? Our staff members are not immune from that either. You know, a lot of our staff members have school-aged children of their own, either here in town or a surrounding community. Where, where childcare i- is a genuine concern. And it's an awful question to ask anyone who wants to come back to work. But we have to ask, can you come back to work? Because either you have to make that decision of staying home with my own children three days a week and not being able to commit to come back to work. Or do I risk my family's income and our livelihood? It's a terrible decision for a family member to make. Uh, or for any staff member to make. And it's the same decision that a lot of our, our families in the community are forced to make. Um, one of the challenges we had was we had a lot of staff members who indicated they couldn't return because of that very issue. So we knew that we didn't necessarily have all the solutions. The state had mentioned on numerous occasions that they were going to try to create childcare centers for educators. Um, but up until this point, we realized that it wasn't going to happen in time if it was going to happen at all. So I made a phone call to one of our longstanding partners and that's Claire Hall over at Educational Resources for Children. And as you know, Claire runs our before and after school care. And I said, Claire, um, we're having, I'm having a grave concern about not having enough staff to open schools on the eighth if so many staff members can't return because they have to care for their children at home, um, three days a week. And I asked Claire if it was possible for her to explore creating a program, which is an impossible thing to ask in a two-week period of time. Um, so that we would have a place to offer our staff members to bring their children so that they can attend school four days a week essentially. Uh, and Claire, as you, you, those of you who have been around, know there's no greater advocate for trying to help out families in, 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 in the town of Edfield said, you know what? Let me look and see if there's something I could come up with. And one of the larger hurdles we had was space. Um, the next phone call I had, uh, it was with Chris Bronson, who has been, you know, my, my partner in, in this entire endeavor since we started this in March and really since the time I've been in this chair. And I explained to Chris the challenges that I was having, um, with maybe the possibility of not being able to open schools if I didn't have enough staff returning. You know, coincidentally, Chris, uh, is running the town, has the same concerns with some of his staff members who have school-aged kids and can't return to their town functions because of, of childcare issues. Um, so we decided to work together and, and, and meet with Claire to see if there was any way possible where we could come up with a space um, that she could house a, a, an all-day program and people will have an opportunity to decide um, whether or not that would be an alternative for them and essentially to be able to come back to work. And I'm pleased to announce that as of this morning, um, we did look at the first floor of the Enfield Annex. Uh, and the space would work out for Claire to bring her staff in there and to run a distance learning academy. So it's not, and it's school-aged children. It's, 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 it's not pre-K students like we were just talking about with Jacqueline. Uh, it's not daycare. I have to make sure I say that out loud. I don't want to get in trouble. Um, it's, it's an, it's educational enhancement, but it's an opportunity for, for instance, if it, you know, if, if a staff member isn't available on Wednesdays because they're going to be home, they want to send their child there on Wednesdays. Um, our child, our children will come, their Enfield Public School students will come equipped already with uh, with their devices and will have adults assisting students, uh, there while they're experiencing their virtual learning. Also, depending upon their cohort, it's available for students or for families who may need, you know, Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday or Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. Um, in a very short period of time, you know, hours, not days, Claire was able to look at the pro, at the building and make the decision that, that she, she would be able to run a program if we had enough families that were interested. I know that the, the number to, for her to operate was about fifty. And just since we announced it to staff early this afternoon, um, I think we're almost at fifty if we haven't exceeded it already. Um, as part of that conversation, we met with, with our counterparts at the town, particularly buildings and grounds, because there's going to be some work that has to go into getting them up and running. And I'll talk about, uh, her licensing in a moment. But while we were on the call, um, and it looked like it was feasible, uh, the town manager said, I'm going to pause myself on the call because this isn't a decision that we were able to make with the using a talent facility. And there are, there are, you know, obviously there, there's, there's processes to go through as far as using a talent facility. So, uh, the manager hung up and said, I've, I've got to notify council leadership because that's ultimately a decision that would end up on their plate. Uh, the first call he made to was the mayor. And I want to thank the mayor for enthusiastically getting behind this. This was a, this was a problem we faced as a community. Um, and the, the town manager recognized that, that we needed to put our heads together to try to meet the needs of not just our employees. Um, but ultimately, if there's enough space available, an additional place for Enfield parents to send their children during these unprecedented times. I know he also spoke with, I believe it was council member Sakala, um, who was enthusiastic about this as well, but having the support from the leadership of the council to get this program up and running, um, to really benefit and also the town of Edfield, uh, was, 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 was very helpful for all of us. And I wanted to appreciate all, I'm sure all the council members agree, but I know at eleven o'clock this morning, they both rushed on the phone to say, go ahead and move forward. Uh, we are up against the clock in order to do this. So we needed quick answers, you know, right away. I know I've shared this, we're exploring this with some members of the board. Um, it was really a game time decision in order to pull the, pull the trigger on this to get it up and running. So, um, it looks like I did send out the brochure, um, to all of our staff members today. The initial, um, kind of first write of refusal to seats for this program is going to be, and I'm calling them our family. So it's Enfield Public School teachers and town of Enfield employees. Um, this program is being designed, um, to assist us for the time being, and that's, that's going to be the first write of refusal for seats. Uh, Claire thinks she can house, you know, a, a certain amount of students. Obviously fifty is the, the, the floor, but we think we're going to meet that in the event that there are, uh, seats available. Um, if we don't fill all of them with our families, then Claire intends to open that up to the rest of the community, for the entire community's families who might be looking for for high-quality distance learning assistance in childcare during that time. So the brochure is right here. Guy is going to post it on our website as soon as we're done. But I, and the prices and everything are on there. I know Claire is working very hard to make this as affordable as possible. You know, we are on, on, in unprecedented times. Um, you know, I never will miss out on an opportunity to quote Bon Jovi, we're doing what we can. And we know that, you know, we're going to have to be flexible and fluid throughout this process. Um, but this really encapsulates the town and the community coming together to make sure that we can, we can meet the needs of our kids and our families as best we can. And we couldn't have done this alone as a board. And the town couldn't have done this alone on the town, but together we were able to pull it off. And I can't thank Claire enough for really pulling a, a last-minute miracle um, and, and pulling this together so quickly for us. So we're, we're indebted to Claire for that. Just to let the board be aware, Claire does have to get licensed. That's a probably a six-week process. It's not unique. There are times where Claire's licensing may not come in in time for the beginning of so what ends up happening with her before and after school programs is that it works under the direction of, of the Board of Education. We don't run it. We are essentially, um, when they open up the new center, uh, it's, I'll, I'll actually read it to you. They'll op, you know, ERFC will operate the Distance Learning Center under the administration of the Enfield Public Schools until their licensing comes in. And then once their licensing comes in, it's all run. The Enfield Public Schools doesn't have a direct affiliation with it. Just to put in perspective, I've got letters that say the same exact thing that we have to send into the licensing place um, that I've signed, that Dr. Schuman signed, that even Dr. Gallagher has signed. Um, it's not uncommon for there to be an overlap between joining the services to when her licensing comes through. So it's not out of the ordinary. But I do intend on signing that letter. I actually, truth be told, Kathy has the letter. I signed it already because we need to get rolling. So that it was a, was something that has kept a lot of us up at night. And I know it's kept a lot of our staff members up at night who, you know, teachers and, and staff members and paraprofessionals and clerical staff members who really want to come back to work. But unfortunately, they're stuck with a, 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 a really challenging decision as to whether or not they can. So anything we can do to help people get some back to normal and assist families to get back work, we're certainly going to try to do. And it's good that we have the support of everyone in the community to do it. That said, that's the last of the big news. Um, and I just want to give an update to the board and to the community, um, for our survey results and thank everyone. I'm not on social media, but I know a lot of you are and a lot of you went out and advertised to, to our, our, our population to, to please go out and fill out the survey. Uh, our, our numbers this time around were a lot greater than they were the first survey. Uh, at last count, we were at four thousand nine hundred and eighty-five response, responses to the survey. Interestingly enough though, our number of parent families who responded that they would be attending a hybrid plan have actually decreased from what was originally sent out back, uh, back in late June. So we're, we're originally about eighty percent of people attending, but as of now, we're at about seventy-three percent of families who have opted in to our hybrid plan. Um, and that said, that concludes the superintendent's report. It wasn't two hours, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. So we'll continue with, uh, new business. Number six, A, approve five thousand series policy for first reading. Do I have a motion by anyone? Moved by Mr. Ryder. Seconded by, I'll say Ms. Hall. I, I have to keep flipping screens because I'm on an iPad tonight, not my lap, not my, uh, laptop. So.
Mr. Chair, may I say something?
Any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Ryder.
No, I, I just wanted to say as the secretary of the policy committee, um, that the five thousand series updates are something that basically encapsulate some updated language regarding some laws that have changed, et cetera. Uh, there's nothing in specifically the five thousand series. Um, that affects how we do our business, how we ask the superintendent and his team to do their business. Um, so I just wanted to speak to that as the secretary of the subcommittee.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Sensing none. Roll call please.
Mrs. Costa. Sorry, I was on mute. I'm voting no. Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
I, I, I'm going to vote yes as a subcommittee member.
Mr. Salazar?
No.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Chairman Crizelle?
No.
The motion fails.
So we send this policy back to the policy committee.
Okay.
To review.
I, I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Do we know who the leader of this subcommittee will be going forward?
I, I haven't this, I haven't decided, but I'll have a decision later this week. Our meeting's not till September 22nd. So we will have a decision shortly.
Okay. Well, let us know. Thank you.
Okay. Proceed, going on to six B, approval of policy number six, one, four, one point three two nine. One to one tablet program first reading. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Ryder?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thurston. Any discussion on this one? This is one that Cave came up with. With seeing that we're giving everyone the one to one, that we're totally being one to one program in town. Correct, Mr. Longy? And I saw him shake his head. So that's good, good for me. Any other discussion? Question for Mr. Longy. Do we need to, first reading's okay on this or, or do we need to proceed and get it both?
Uh, no, we can do first reading and then let people look at it, do second reading.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks for asking.
All right. Ms. Kathy, roll call please.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Four.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yeah, this one's okay, I guess. Yes.
Mr. Salazar?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Chairman Crizelle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we'll proceed with board member comments and we'll start with, how about Mr. LeBlanc? We'll start.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I did have a few things I want to talk about tonight. So bear with me for a couple of minutes. First, let me clarify some comments that I made two weeks ago, uh, our last board meeting. And one of the things I said was, um, let's not make any of this political. My intent behind that was not targeted to anyone in this meeting. We're all working extremely hard to make it as safe as possible for our kids to return to school. What I meant by that is, in today's society, it seems that everything is becoming a political spectacle. And it shouldn't be that way. For example, you know, if I support my local police department or even silly things like buying an item off a grocery shelf. It, everything's just become so political nowadays. And the last thing a return to school should be, or a school in any sense of that matter is political. So that message was going out to our society as a whole. And as long as I'm on the board, I'm going to do everything in my power to ensure that it never does get political. And I think that's the way it should be. Um, let's see what else I had going on tonight. So another thing, um, that I'm proud of, and I believe I've, in my short time on the board that I've done, um, is. Listen and base any of my decisions on what my constituents expressed to me. I bring those ideas, concerns and thoughts to our board. And it, it doesn't come from anywhere else except those members in our community. And I trust in those decisions that I make because of that. You can, you can say that I don't have kids in the school system. You'd be 110% correct. I don't have any kids at all for that matter. But what I do have is many kids who I coach in town. And many of those families who I've become close with and I listen to and talk to those families year round. And I listen to their concerns and that's where my decisions come from. So I find solitude in that. And, um, I have 100% faith in my decisions because of that. Speaking of sports and, and coaching and whatnot, as many of you know, this isn't a board decision, but I'm going to be vocal about it. Here in this meeting, as I have been outside, um, outside the board as well. The CIAC is coming up with a decision apparently this week on the return to sports. I've been the biggest advocate for our athletes to get back on their respective fields. I think it's necessary for them. There's way too many that want to play. And have been playing all summer with no problems. And they deserve the chance to, uh, play this fall in their sport. It means a lot to them and, uh, I can't wait to see them out there on the field. So I encourage the CIAC. Please stick to the original plan and let the kids play, plain and simple. Tutu, I'm getting close to the end. Let's see. Another thing, um, let me see, I'll just get my notes together. Another thing was, um, a topic that's come up a lot recently is public communication. And my comments towards that are, one, I can't wait to get back in person and listen to thoughts, concerns, ideas. In the council chambers. On top of that, I think, looking into the future, um, a possibility we could look at is. All of our videos are on YouTube. We could open up the comment section on that and allocate for a certain amount of time for people who watch the videos on YouTube. To maybe type in some comments or questions or something. And we can, uh, read those and have them on record. So something to look into in the future as we move forward. And last but not least, um, to everyone that's returning to school September 8th. Good luck. Um, I wish everyone a safe, healthy and successful school year. And I'm encouraged that this new hybrid model that we're all endeavoring on. Will lead to success for we can get to school, uh, five days a week sooner rather than later. And I pray everything goes well. So that's a lot tonight for me, but, um, that's it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. Uh, Mr. Salazar?
I don't have specific comments, Mr. Chairman, but I do have a couple of questions. Could I ask a couple of questions of the superintendent, who you regarding the couple of announcements, one in particular?
Right, okay.
Okay. Um, Mr. Dreszek, uh, I, I, I think I'm asking for some, some parents that will, are going to be curious. Many times in the past, the issue has come up about, why don't we use the annex or what used to be known as, um, the old high school. For, for, for a school. And the answer that we keep getting from everyone is that it cannot be used as a learning facility. And yet we're going to be using some or part of the, the buildings for a learning center. Can you speak to that and, you know, provide some information that maybe people will be wondering about or questioning? I think it would be important and wise to get in front of that issue becomes, before it does become an issue of in fact, people want to go in that direction.
Sure. Yeah. Uh, first of all, it's not going to be, the, the annex can't be used for a school under the guidance of the Board of Ed. And under the guidance of the State Department of Education for a school. It's going to be used as a. Through a nonprofit, which is ERFC, um, to hold, host, it's called the Digital Learning Center. But for all intents and purposes, before and after care, all daycare, I don't want to call it daycare because I know that's not, not what they do. But they are licensed by a completely different entity than a public school system would be. So for instance, we report to the State Department of Education. So all of the issues that we would run into physically in the building. That sort of necessitated the decision, you know, by previous boards to consolidate and go to Enfield High would still exist. As far as things such as, um, you know, our, the, some of the ADA compliance issues. There's different parameters if it's going to be used as a traditional school as opposed to a program as another school. So you're able to have programs in there, but we can't designate that as a school. We can't say Fermi's reopen. That's not what's happening here. It's ERFC essentially is leasing the space to run a before and after care or all daycare program. That benefits Enfield Public School employees and Town of Enfield employees. But it's not, they are working in, prior to their license, which is licensed through a different area of the state, not the state board of education. That we work as a partner with them, but is not technically considered a school. And they're only using a few of the designated rooms in that, that wouldn't have any of the compliance issues that we would have dealt with. They're not using the entire building. It's going to be on the basement floor only. So I hope that clarified. I, I understand that's going to be a question because I get that a lot. Why don't we just open it up again? Once we call it a school, all of that $10 million issue that we had when the report originally came out, all comes back to fruition again. Uh, at this point, it's a municipal space that we're allowing ERFC to use to house this program.
Appreciate the information very much. And like I said, I hope that, you know, by, by bringing this information forth and reminding people of what the different conditions, let's call it that for lack of a better word. That, that it addresses people's concerns that they may bring up in the near future. What, one other question regarding the program, this is a question that I personally have is, uh, I, I want to make sure that I understood. You said a floor of 50 seats, but is that actually the ceiling or, or is there the opportunity for more seats to be opened up? So I'm, I'm a little confused as to that. So.
So in order to operate, um, there's a certain amount of seats that she'd have to fill in order for it to be sustainable. Cause she still obviously has expenses to pay staff members and she has to, uh, in order, in order to, there, there are non-for-profit, but they have to meet certain criteria in order to be able to operate. So that floor would be 50 students. Um, there is the potential for more than that. I don't want to speak on her behalf because I don't want Claire to get mad at me, but numbers of 150 to 200 students as a possibility were thrown out there. A lot of it's going to be based upon need. Initially, I know our, our, our building and ground folks who have been fantastic, not just for us, but within minutes of us deciding to do this, they're already putting plans in. Cause right now, some of those rooms are being utilized for storage. So B and G have to go over there and start clearing out some of the spaces. My understanding is we're going to start with six rooms. And then depending upon enrollment, if people are watching tonight and all of a sudden ERFC website, which is. www.erfcinc.org for more information, go on if you want to register. I feel like Scott now with the PTO website. But anyone who is interested, I meant that as a compliment, Scott. If, if enrollment in the, the, if the activity in, in the community is greater that, you know, more families are interested in. There is space to try to accommodate as many families as we can. I think our first concern was making sure we had enough to make it sustainable. And just based on Enfield Board of Ed employees, we, we believe that we will. It's this morning, we've gotten, I think, close to 35 commitments for, for students already. And just our employees, you know, even if it's 10 employees and they have three kids each, they're going to send their kids there. So we're, we're hopeful that if there are increased opportunities to open up more into the, to the general public. Uh, you know, Claire has indicated that, that she can. I know there's the ceiling out. I don't want to speak on behalf because it's going to be dependent upon rooms. But the numbers that we started out with were somewhere around 150 to 200.
Great. And, and, and lastly, um, it, so is the program going to be funded entirely by the ERFC and by donations that are going to be requested, I assume?
Yes, it's going to be, it's a self-sustaining program and they, they do, there is a, a sliding fee scale for families, just like there is for before and after school. And it's in the, in the brochure, it does state what the, the prices would be for families. I know she has a sliding fee scale, um, you know, depending upon a, a family's ability to pay, but I don't want to speak on that behalf because that's, I'm jumping into her territory. But just like all their programs, um, Claire is a remarkable grant writer. So I know that she funds a lot of her programs that we partner with, with her on. Because sometimes you end up a partnership with a local board of ed in order to apply for a grant. But their program is 100% self-sustaining. They don't, they don't receive funds from us. There's no, there would be no financial contribution on behalf of the board. It would just be any in-kind services that we would share. Uh, we do a lot of communication with her staff because if kids are going to after school care. We, our teachers talk to, to her staff members because we want to make sure that, that, that there's some continuity in the instruction. We do training with them as well. So there's a lot of integration that we do between the program so that it's still our kids. And if they're with us until three o'clock and then with hurdle six, we want to make sure that we're, we're communicating that our kids are still getting everything they need. Based on our curriculum and, and what we're offering in the district. So, yeah.
Uh, thank you for providing all this additional information. I, I hope it's helpful to the folks that are watching and that may hear about this program or find out about it in the coming days. So thanks again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar. Ms. Costa?
I have no comments tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Okay. Um, just a few things, uh, tonight. I have a few questions. I have a few comments. Some people reached out to the board and they were asking, um, why we weren't meeting in person. So one of my constituents, um, on the board, um, made some phone calls for us. So, um, right now the council chambers is under renovation. So, um, I don't know that we can get into the council chambers until September. We also have a board conference or a boardroom, um, at Alcorn that has ETV capabilities. But right now, um, that is unavailable due to a lot of, um, different supplies that have come in for the reopening of the school. Um, I just want to say personally, I am 150% on board, um, meeting with everyone on in person. I would, as if we were to meet in person, I want to, everyone to wear a mask and I want everybody to be six feet apart. Um, I want to emulate what we're requesting of our students, um, and what many of us do in our everyday life. So, um, with that being said, um, as soon as we can meet in person. Um, I also think that, um, things get lost when we're not meeting in person, um, those little sidebar conversations we might have with each other. Before and after a meeting, try to catch up in what's going on in our personal lives. Can make, um, sometimes a cohesive working group a little bit more challenging, uh, when you get to know people on a personal level. Um, I know this decision, um, is very hard for people to make. And, um, seeing that I do have a child in Enfield Public Schools, I will share with you all that. I voted to approve the hybrid plan and my, um, student will also participate. So they will be in school two days a week, um, wearing their mask. With that being said, um, I reflect on what my life was like, you know, eight years ago. When I had three in Enfield Public Schools and, um, you know, they were 12 and under. So I think that this is, um, a very personal decision and every family, um, has, um, specific reasons as to why or why not. They can do the hybrid, they can't, they're going to do the remote option only. But I just wanted to show that I, I'm standing behind the plan that I'm presenting. And, um, that I am sending my student to the, to the hybrid plan. Anything could change in any of our lives where we become a situation where our health is compromised or different things like that. And we might have to take a step back and reevaluate our family situation. So, um, I just wanted to give you my stance on meeting in person. I'm hoping next month that we are all meeting in person. Um, and, and that's how I feel about that. The next thing I wanted to say is I listened to Ms. Clark's, um, Q and A for Enfield High. She did an absolutely amazing job. She just feels, um, she was just so, um, well composed. And answered, um, a lot of questions that a lot of parents had. It's about an hour long. And, um, if you have any questions, please read it. Um, I would love if every principal could just, um, maybe not have to do an hour of Q and A. But could just give that brief overview of what's the, what school is going to be like. It's such an unnerving time and an unknown time for, for all of us. I actually have, um, a couple of easy questions, um, for the superintendent. So somebody brought to my attention, do private schools, I'm not saying parochial schools, but do private schools, um, in the state of Connecticut, do they have to wear masks? And practice social distancing within their school campus?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that all falls under the governor's executive order. I don't, I'm not an expert on that, but my understanding is that masks are required indoors regardless.
Correct. That's, that's how I understood it as well. Um, and then, uh, I keep getting questions about, um, ETLA, um, that program, you know, who they should contact. And possibly, I don't know if there's going to be tours or a virtual tour.
Yeah, that, that's contact here. Julie Carroll oversees that. We have a great new teacher, Maureen Francis. And one of the casualties of this whole process is, you know, Maureen, our longtime teacher at ETLA retired. We didn't get a chance to give her a proper send off. So she's watching. Congratulations, Maureen. So you're gone. But all that will be coming out this week. As I said earlier, um, it's going to make it, if it makes the eight of you feel a little bit better. You know, because a lot of things have been such limbo over the last couple of months. There's just so many unknowns. Everything is starting to culminate right now. And I'm getting a chance to see everything coming from other different angles and Andy and I are reviewing everything. Once you see all of the things that will be coming out in the very near future. You will all feel much better about this process because I can tell you, I was able to breathe for the first time, I think, today. Saturday, a little bit when I heard about the iPad cases, but today the work that our staff has put together, culminated, it's, there's some finishing touches being put on it, but I would not be surprised if we're sharing, you know, a lot of the communications that we have, um, with other districts because it, it maybe I'm biased. It, it has come out all that well. So, um, yes, though there will be information forthcoming very shortly on all of our programs, but especially ETLA, um, because they're going to be, there, there are, there are roommates here and I can't wait to have them back.
Yep. Um, and then the last two questions, um, kind of coincided with each other. So, um, after, as we approach October 16th, uh, we'll have, um, more direction as to whether or not we're going to continue on with hybrid, whether we're going to go in person. Um, are we even going to make it till October 16th based on the numbers in the state with, with the hybrid plan? If somebody opts out to start school, um, and we're going to continue on with the hybrid, would they have at that point after October 16th to opt in for the hybrid?
Yes, that was the whole purpose of the
Okay.
date. So that way people had, we, we had a reasonable timeframe when people, so the parents can change their mind. That was really the
Okay.
a driving force behind coming up with a, with a cutoff date for that. I think it's um, and again, we're going to, we're changing the tune a little bit. We want to be, I want to be a little bit more optimistic that everything's going to go smooth and our kids are going to be back in every day and life's going to be back to normal and we'll see you all on the, you know.
Right.
Back, back
Right.
while watching games.
Yeah, this is coming from like a parent who has, you know, a couple of parents who have work situations where they've made arrangements to work from home or make alternative work arrangements up until that date. And they wanted, um, they want to just kind of make sure that they would have the opportunity that even though they opted out in the first phase, that they could opt in in the second.
Yeah, we specifically did that for those families who chose to opt out to give them an opportunity to come back in. Because the reality is we don't know how long it's going to last. I think we're all hopeful. I think our intention is October 16th. Everything's going to go great and we're going to move on. But, uh, in the event, you know, like I, I told you last week, you know, my commitment to you is we need to make a decision by October 1st, one way or the other, or by the first week of October, so that those families can plan. But obviously if something were to change, um, and it's prior to the first week of October. I'm going to call you guys all together and tell you, you know, and just as an example, I mean, no one saw what happened to Danbury coming. It happened.
Right.
Murray had to pull the plug just like that. I hope it's isolated and it stays there and we don't have to deal with it. But right now
Right.
it's so much in flux that we're going to rise forward with this is our plan and our hope is to increase that plan as the year progresses.
Right. Um, okay. So thank you for that clarification. And I just wanted to comment on the ERFC, um, town, um, childcare. Um, I think this is amazing, um, having a family member who's a teacher of threes and she teaches and she has three small kids. It's, that part is very stressful, uh, for our teachers, especially when two parents are teachers. So I really appreciate, um, the town, the council leadership and, um, central office and the town manager's office for, um, being able to look outside the box and offer this to our incredible and amazing staff. Lastly, um, to our black students and Enfield Public Schools. We have unfortunately more civil unrest with the shooting of Jacob Blake. Um, I wanted to let you know that this is, I understand this is a scary time for you all. And, um, it's been a rough summer with a lot of the civil unrest. And I hope that you have support and feel that when you come back to school, that you can talk, um, to your teachers and your guidance counselors about how you've been feeling over the events that transpired over this, this past summer. And on top of it all, um, the anxiety that I'm sure a lot of our students are going to have, um, regarding, um, coming back into school with COVID. So I just wanted to, um, speak to that. And lastly, um, I just felt like I wanted to say this out loud because 2020 has not been a great year. And one of the things that have not made it a great year is the fact that there is COVID. But one of the things that I have also found was very prevalent this year was, um, the diagnosis of cancer. We, um, recently found out a family member that's very close to us has, um, cancer and is in for quite a fight. The cancer does not discriminate by age. It does not discriminate by sex. It does not discriminate by color. And, um, I think that this has just been a very sad and tired year. Um, I'm going to go with the superintendent's optimism and say, I hope that, that the tides are turning. Um, I hope that, um, we can get into school and the hybrid plan goes well and we can iron out any kinks. But the next two weeks, I'm going to say a prayer for anyone that's fighting cancer and their families. I'm going to say a prayer for any parent that is out there that doesn't know if they made the right decision on what to do September 8th. And, um, I'm just going to take the last two weeks of the summer to reflect and wish everyone, um, the best in the upcoming weeks. And, um, I think that's all I have to say tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LeBlanc. Uh, Ms. Hall.
I am not really sure. I'm in a position to do too many comments tonight. Having had so much difficulty with computers today. But I would like to congratulate our superintendent on his positive aspects tonight. And especially on what he referred to as a last minute miracle. That is providing coverage for the children of our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Thurston.
Um, just really quick, um, thank you, Jackie, for the presentation and for making sure that all of our little people are getting back to school safe and sound. Um, and also a huge, huge shout out to Claire Hall for, um, for the, the program she came up with. And like Chris said, you know, within two weeks and for her to come up with this is just amazing. Um, so thank you very much for that, Claire. And I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe school year. And, um, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Thurston. Mr. Ryder.
Oh, for
I, I have a few comments. So first of all, of course, I want to thank Jaclyn Valley. And I was teased before we went live on air because I said she was my kindergarten teacher, but she was. So a year before we moved to Enfield, my kids were one and three. And my children learned, um, what school was from Enfield Public Schools. And that's one of the reasons why I've been so involved and volunteered and I've been a PTO dad for so many years. But our first teacher was a kindergarten teacher. And that was Ms. Valley. And I thank her every time I see her because she was amazing. And she was, as a parent, as a dad, such a great introduction to the Enfield Public School systems. At the time, Mr. Dreszek didn't have his role, Mr. Longy didn't have his role. So I was just a dad and I, I appreciate what Ms. Valley has done. I'm glad that she's at Stowe. I think that she's the perfect person to be there and I just wanted to thank her. I also want to take a quick minute to thank Mr. Bronson. Because Chris Bronson has announced that he's going to be retiring shortly. I, um, and I wanted to thank him because he's been open to my questions, to my concerns as a resident, as a board of ed member, et cetera. But however, I've emailed him over the last few years, he's responded and I just wanted to thank Mr. Bronson for that. So. I, I don't know where to start. I'm confused, friends. I don't know why the 5,000 policy didn't pass. Uh, that's something that Mr. Salazar and myself worked on. I don't know if it's because Mr. Rutledge left. I, I don't know what that's about. That's the first series of thousands, if you will, that we've gotten through since our election, uh, back in November of 2019. It took us nine and a half months to get there. So I, I don't know what the issue is. Mr. LeBlanc reminds us not to be political. But that seemed like a party vote. So I don't know what's happening there. As far as meeting in person. One of my closest confidants in the district, Mrs. LeBlanc talked about this. So I, I just wanted to reiterate from me personally. We haven't been able to meet in person. I mean, obviously the answer for the last 90% of the time between March 13th and today was COVID. But specifically in the recent, you know, weeks, as some restrictions have lightened, et cetera. We haven't been able to meet in person because council chambers at town hall, they're, they're renovating it a bit. They're adding some cameras, et cetera. So I just want to let parents know, and I see this on Facebook and I don't, I'm not specifically speaking about Enfield. I, I see this nationally. You know, people are like, you know, don't tell me to send my kids back if you guys are meeting virtually from the safety of your own couches. Well, the ETV cameras, and to be specific, the Enfield Television Channel cameras are at council chambers at town hall. Town hall is closed with the exception of employees or residents by appointment only. And, and this is for all eight of us. We're not employees of the Town of Enfield. We, we were elected to help lead the schools in a certain direction or lead the town council in a certain direction, depending on board of ed versus town council and constables, et cetera. We're not employees. So that's why we can't meet at town hall. There's some renovations underway. Town hall, council chambers, specifically that room should reopen to us by mid March, oh, I'm sorry, by mid September. And we hope to be meeting in person by our second meeting in September. The chairman of the board of ed reached out to me and I reached out to my team. And we talked about, hey, should we all meet in person to show solidarity with the schools that are opening soon? We both agreed on that a hundred percent. My suggestion and what I suggested to my team on the board of ed was let's take those, you know, four or five foot tables, let's space them out. Let's, let's replicate, replicate a classroom. And the issue was at that point, ETV couldn't bring in a camera, couldn't mic us all appropriately, et cetera. This is something that we would do 100% if we could, but we can't meet at council chambers at town hall. And we can't bring all the cameras and microphones over to Alcorn for a one-off meeting. But if you don't think as a viewer, as a voter, or as a resident, or as a neighbor, or as a friend of mine, that I personally don't take the responsibility personally when I voted for the hybrid schedule. When as a board of ed member, I have two children that attend the Enfield Public Schools going into grade four and going into grade seven. If you don't think that I took that to heart, then, then you're mistaken because I did. And we have opted in that both of these kids adhere to the hybrid schedule that Mr. Dreszek and that Ms. Valley presented this evening, if you're going to Stowe. That we just guessed this survey. And that we didn't talk about it. And that we didn't think about the two kids that we brought into this world. You are mistaken. We took it very personal. I couldn't take this more seriously than I have. That's why I voted for the hybrid schedule. I don't think we're quite ready as a state or as a nation in pockets to go five days a week. That's why I couldn't vote for the amendment proposed to say, hey, on October blank, let's just say we're going five days a week. No, because as a parent, I don't want to tell my boss or my supervisor or have my spouse tell her boss or her supervisor. It's all good. My kids are going to go two days a week for now and my husband can cover their learning from home. But on October blank, we're going five days a week. So you'll see me back in Bloomingdale, Connecticut on that date. We don't know. We didn't know on March 12th, when we closed. We thought we'd go back at worst case scenario after Easter break. We haven't gone back yet. So that, that's the only reason, and this isn't political. That's the reason why we said indefinite. And I will tell you that my six-year-old, who's now going into seventh grade, who was 11 and turned 12 this July, hated that word indefinite. Dad, what does that mean? Do I get to go back and see my friends? Do I get to go back and see my cool science teacher, Mr. Nucio? Do I get to go back and see my cool homeroom teacher? I don't know. It's indefinite. Well, dad, define indefinite. I can't. And neither could Mr. Dreszek. And neither could Ms. Valley. And neither could Mr. Longing. And that is why we are still home, but why we are hopeful to return to school a couple of days a week. We'll see how it goes. And I am all for going back five days a week. If it is safe, if we can be accountable. If we can protect our children. And this is the best plan for now. I also want to remind everybody, as Mr. Dreszek teased me earlier, but it's okay because I take great pride in it. Go to enfieldpto.com slash your school slash HMS slash Eli Whitney, whatever. I, what I did is I took all the dates that we're going to go to school in September and I put them on the website. So on Tuesday, it's A and a K. Wednesday, we're all home. Here's what time you'd start. Thursday and Friday, it's L to Z, et cetera. So please visit that website. Please bookmark it. Follow us on Facebook. I created that website. I created that Facebook page so I could personally connect to my parent friends that I see when I'm DJing the Halloween party, Eli Whitney, or it has a memorial for six years. I'm in the buildings. I've already met with more than one principal in their buildings about, hey, what can the PTOs do come fall? Oh, not a lot. All right. Well, we'll try, you know, we'll still do whatever we can. We'll still keep communicating with our families. We are a valuable extension of this school system. And we will do our best as PTO dads and PTO moms to keep parents informed. Because Mr. Dreszek might send out this, you know, post and Mr. Longy might send out this post. But we're all in this together and we try to keep the parents informed. To all of our teachers at the Enfield Teachers Association. Thank you for coming back to teach our children. You are not daycare workers and our schools are not daycares. You chose to teach. So you should educate our children and help them be the next generation of teachers and learners and workers and educators themselves and politicians or whatever you want to call, whatever this is. These kids will work in the private sector and they will work in the public sector because of what you have taught them. So thank you to ETA. Mr. Dreszek, thank you for the masks. I love a little logo on the side. I'm all about hashtag marketing and branding. So I think that's very cool. I, I think that's fantastic. Uh, again, I take this serious and personal. I, again, I, I work on the policy committee. I'm the secretary. I was secretary under the former policy committee member. Thank you, Mr. Renier. I was the secretary to Mr. Rutledge. I'm not sure again, why the 5,000 series failed. So to Mr. O'Blank, who says, keep politics out of this. I don't know where we are on that because this seemed like a party line vote. And to our chairman, thank you for letting me speak and I concede to the next And to our chairman, thank you for letting me speak and I concede to the next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Um. I'm going to start off also with town manager, Chris Bronson. Excellent. Best town manager Enfield's ever had. He will be missed. He's worked with us. He's. You know, he, he's retiring, just so we know that he's retiring. He's not quitting. He's retiring. It was, it was said when he took the job that he was only in for a couple of years. Well, the couple of years came and went. But it's been difficult the last six months for him, if not more, eight months, all right, since January. So really, he's, he's been working on his COVID since January. So. He's remarkable man and I, I just want to thank him for all his hard work and anything we ever needed as a school board, he always gave us so. Or worked with us and worked with Mr. Dreszek also. So thank you, Mr. Bronson. Good luck on your retirement. I know we'll still see you before then because it's not till October. But it is what it is. Last week I reached out to the town to see what's, what's the status of the town, town council chamber. I was told that it won't be ready until, till the town council meeting on the 21st of September. So the room wasn't available. So then I looked into possibly having a meeting here at Alcorn. And I couldn't get, because ETV does not work for us. They work for the town and they have a directive that any, any and all filming must be, must be through the town. So we just couldn't get them here to film us at the same time. So. So that, so that was what happened with, with us meeting at Alcorn. But as soon as we can all meet together, I've been saying this since July. I, I'm not a Zoom, I'm not this, this team or whatever we're on platform. I'm not a fan of it. And I figured today I have a little different background because I was sick of showing off my living room. So. So that's why I came to Alcorn myself and with two others and we're here. Uh, having our meeting here. So. Um. And. Pray to God that September 8th comes, we get the kids back in school, everything works and then as was discussed, if everything goes well, then we get back to full time on October 19th. But that will be, that will be, uh, you know, watched over in the next two months and and, and we'll, we'll have, uh, we'll have decisions made before then, but praying that we do go full time on October 19th. Which that's, that's what we, that's what we voted right now. So. And that's about all I have at this point. So let's move, move on to.
Action, Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Yes, Mr. Dres.
This is one last thing, but you mentioned in your comments. Um, and I, this is the best part of the night. One of the things we look forward to. And I'm going to say my goodbye for Mr. Bronson for another day. So I don't want him to feel slighted, but I have something to. Mr. Bronson has been an outstanding town manager and friend and he's not leaving till October. So let's not rush him out. Um, I know one of the things that, um, we typically remind board members and members of the, of the town council. At this particular meeting every year with the first day of school coming up and we're not going to meet prior to that. Um, is this is another one of the, the downsides of the times that we're living in. Um, is we like to be a welcoming school district where we ask anyone who's interested in, in being a part of the first day of school, that everyone's more than welcome to just let us know who's there. Unfortunately, none of you can come. Um, one of the, and I don't mean to be rude. Um, but one of the things we're really trying to adhere to is this notion of limiting the amount of people that are in our buildings. Um, and that also goes from PTOs, as people as well, when, when kids are in school. If you're there to drop off your own child, that you have every right to do. Parents, bring your children there. But as, as elected officials, uh, and, and Andy and I talked about this at length today. Um, that we're going to have to practice what we preach and we're typically spending the first day of school, running through the hallways and talking to everybody and, you know. Guy's nodding next to me here because he's usually right there with me as we're going school to school. That's going to be one of the hardest things we do this year. Kathy knows because she never sees us, especially on the first couple of days of school. Um, we have to ask everybody to please, you know, the only people who should be in the schools are the ones who need to be there. Those are our kids and our staff members. And that's going to even go for us. And I let our central office staff know today. Don't plan on walking around schools the first day of school. Um, the only people who are, who need to be there are the ones who are going to be permitted to be there. So I, I said this the last meeting. Don't take it personal. No visitors. That even goes for us. So unfortunately, let's hope things get better and maybe, you know, January 1st, we can invite everybody back in or whatever. We're back. But right now we have to ask everybody to please stay away. So I apologize for that, but I failed to mention that earlier.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you for clarifying that. So no one's allowed, only students and teachers are allowed in schools and, and staff. That, that's.
And parents, and parents dropping off children.
Yeah, parents dropping off. Yes. All right. Number eight, Board Committee Reports, Curriculum, Mr. Salazar.
Apologize. Um, I was muted. Uh, we have not had a meeting since our, uh, last board meeting. Um, so I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Finance. Um, Ms. Costa wasn't available at yesterday's finance, but we do have some, some, uh, reports to, to, to discuss on number 10. So I will, I will read them into the record. Um, policy. Um, Mr. Salazar, do you want to, or Mr. Mr. Ryder, you want to say anything?
Well, yes, I'm second in command on the Policy Committee as a secretary. And as I said, I'm just confused at the work that took us nine and a half months to finally accomplish on the 5,000 series wasn't voted on. Um, or wasn't advanced to a second reading. So I, I just again would ask the board why that is. And as Secretary for the Policy Committee, I am happy to answer any questions about any of the series that was forwarded to the Board of Ed from the committee. Um, so if anybody has any questions, please reach out to me. Uh, you guys all have my email or my cell phone number, 518-210-4639. Um, I, again, just wondering where we are on that. But, uh, we're meeting again in, uh, late September and, uh, we'll start up from there. Thank you.
Mr. Salazar. I don't, I don't have anything to add to, Mr. Ryder. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Uh, leadership, we have none. Joint facilities met and we approved the third phase of the Barnard roof, which a PO was to be go out today for that. And they're still, if all goes well, we should have it done by the eighth of September. And we're working on the roof plan. That's, we're going to present a, a roof plan to the council in probably the second meeting of September now, seeing that that, the meeting was delayed. JFK, I know is going very well. They've taken every opportunity through the summer to, to stay. I think they're ahead of schedule at this point and they're they're preparing the, uh, the temporary classrooms for, for the swing space, I should say, to be ready for the eighth as well. Uh, joint security, we have none at this point. School reopening, I think we're pretty, uh, unless Ms. Costa wants to add anything. Which Ms. Costa is not even on anymore. Okay. So she can't add anything.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
The, uh, Security Committee, uh, right now we're scheduled to meet again September 2nd. Just for public record.
Okay. Um. So school reopening, I think is self-explanatory. We, we've accomplished what we wanted with that committee. Joint Insurance is tentative to meet in October. I've, uh, reached out to the, um, the town staff to see if that meeting's still, still on. And that's about it for committee reports. So let's go to number nine, approval of uh, approval of special Board of Ed meeting minutes for June 23rd, 2020. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Salazar?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thurston. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. I'm going to assume we got eight or seven, seven in favor, none against. Special Board of Ed meeting minutes for June 30th, 2020. The motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thurston. Seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. Any discussion? All in favor, show our hands. Seven in favor, zero against. Special BOE meeting minutes of July 7th, 2020. Motion by Mr. Salazar?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thurston. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hands. Seven in favor, zero against. Special B, uh, special BOE meeting minutes of July 29th, 2020. Motion moved by Ms. Thurston. Seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. Any discussion? All in favor, show our hands. Seven in favor, zero against. And last one, special Board of Ed meeting minutes of August 11th, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thurston, seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven in favor, zero against. So number 10, I have the printouts here. I will read these into the record. And if somebody just says motion and second at the end, we'll go from there. So. First one is the Finance Committee met on August 24th, 2020 to review financial statements for the month of June year-to-date and to examine, examine various documents related to finance. Our review concluded there was nothing significant to report to the board. Moved that we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. Certified that for the month of June, total expenditures in the amount of $8,321,295 and 29 cents. Broken down between payroll totaling $2,857,555 and 28 cents and other accounts totaling $5,463,740 and 1 cent. All payments were made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted within books of accounts. Copies of approvals and check-in invoices are properly documented. Someone moved, moved by?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thurston, seconded by Ms. Hall. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. We have seven in favor, zero against. Finance Committee met on August 24th, 2020 to review financial statements for the grants during the month of June year, year-to-date and to examine various documents related to finance. Our review concluded there is nothing significant to report to the board. Move that we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify for the month of June, the total grant and head start expenditures, the amount of $474,420 and 30 cents. Broken down between payroll totaling $251,516 and 11 cents. And other accounts totaling $222,904 and 19 cents. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for with the books of accounts. Copies of approvals and check-in voices are perfectly documented. Moved by?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thurston?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hall. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven in favor, zero against. Finance Committee met on August 24th, 2020 to review financial statements for the month of July, year-to-date and examine various documents related to finance. Our review concluded there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion to move to, to accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify for the month of July, total expenditures in the amount of $1,240,911 and 91 cents. Broken down between payroll totaling $700,954 and 96 cents. And other, other accounts totaling $539,956 and 95 cents. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the book of accounts. Copies of approvals and check-in voices are properly documented. Moved by? Moved by Ms. Thurston? Seconded by Ms. Hall. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven in favor, zero against. Finance Committee met on August 24th, 2020 to review, to review financial statements for, and for the grants during the month of July, year-to-date and examine various documents related to finance. Our review concluded there is nothing significant to report to the board. Move that we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of July, the total grant and head start expenditures in the amount of $58,485 and 58 cents. Broken down between payroll totaling $49,600 and and 68 cents and other accounts totaling $8,884 and 90 cents. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the book of accounts. Copies of approval or check-in voices are properly documented. Moved by Ms. Thurston, seconded by Ms. Hall. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven in favor, zero against. And we do have one line item transfer. The Finance Committee met on August 20th, 2020 to review line item transfers request for fiscal year 2020. Moves that the Enfield Board of Education approve the following line item transfers. From account 300 Professional Services, $45,413. 400 repairs and maintenance in the amount of $26,752. Account 500 Support Services in the amount of $536 and Account 600 Tech Supplies Materials, $548,427. For a total of $1,157,170. And two, moving to account 100 salaries. Account 200 Benefits, $209,437. Account 700 Equipment, $434,700. And account 800 Due Subscriptions and Graduation of $6,624. For a total of $1,157,171. Uh, do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thurston? Seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, zero against. Thank you very much. So we will move now to 11 correspondents and communications. I don't think we have any. We have none.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Thurston? Seconded by Mr. LeBlanc. All in favor?
Woo-hoo.
Seven in favor, zero against. Any discussion? Go ahead and discuss.
Just, just, no, just a quick note. Um, although I appreciate all the work the Finance Committee does and I know that Ms. Costa does a fantastic job and Ms. LeBlanc and our, our alternate. Um, Ms. Hall does a fantastic job. Um, I never raised my hand for any of those votes. So I would just ask Ms. Kathy Zlacki, who is amazing. Thank you Kathy for everything you do for the Enfield Board of Education. Um, please change all that votes, all of them to six to one. None of them were six, zero. I never raised my hand. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I had to switch screens. So you were on another screen.
Understood. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.